This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, is the body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Here.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have two things to add to the agenda. The first is, there should have been on the agenda a second reading of an ordinance amending Section 505.071 of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio entitled Cruelty to Companion Animals. We just had the first reading at the last meeting, and that was not placed into committee, so we will add that on under second reading of ordinances. Then we have a Housing, Health, and Recreation Committee report that has been requested to be added to the agenda. You also have an updated Exhibit A for your ordinance to change appropriations that is on your desks. Mr. Mumper.
I move we amend the agenda for those two items.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will now move on to the public hearing. I will declare this public hearing open. This public hearing is to hear public comments on the city of Norwood's 2018 application for Hamilton County Community Development Block Grant Funding. Is there anyone who wishes to speak about the funding or potential funding for the community development block grant funds? Mr. Blair.
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Jennifer, would you mind coming forward? Jennifer Vatter?
Sure.
Mr. Blair?
So with these community block grant funds, when it comes to the projects, is how's the process go? Like if we have an idea for one of a few projects for the community block grant, how would we go about that?
There's no, for this grant program, there is no specific resolution required by council, as I'm sure you're familiar with other grant, OPWC and things like that, where you have to have a specific resolution. So there is not any formal action that has to be done by council, so it's pretty much the public hearing for the public and all the elected officials to give input, and then the administration puts it together. So that, I should backtrack, that's the requirement for CDBG. Now, any internal requirement that, you know, Norwood would like to have or wants to have, I may not be familiar with, that's my understanding, but I can't answer to that. But as far as a requirement for the grant program itself, they do not have that. So, you know, pretty much from here on out, I think this is the last public hearing scheduled. You are required to have two, and then the ideas would come together, and typically the administration would get that, gets that to me as far as, you know, logistically, and then we get it into the county for the applications.
So, for example, if there's an idea at ARO Community Center, that gym has needed to be repaired or refurbished, basically a whole new one for the past at least 10 years or so, nails come up on the floorboard, the ref there, he'll stop the games and literally nail down, re-nail down nails. I mean, I looked at a few estimates, I think it costs between 70 to 80 grand to get that done. Would that be a project that these block grant funds would be able to?
That should be. That's something that we could double-check on. I mean, it certainly would fall under, you know, the recreation, where?
Southern Norwood Community Center.
Don't hear. So, it's community-wide, so based on that eligibility requirement, I would think it would meet that. We would always double-check it. But that's also a good point that I didn't bring up, is that, you know, you always want a good estimate or, you know, for these applications. They are not really very detailed, specific applications like some other grant programs, but you definitely want a good number. So that's a good point to, you know, bring up. You want to look at, you know, some cost estimates and things before you put it in, obviously.
And just one more question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Blair?
If it comes to an idea, like, let's say we would like to expand our athletic program with the recreation, would these block grant funds be able to be used for an expansion of certain sports to the youth?
For operating costs or budget, so ongoing operating?
Yeah.
Costs? That's something we really have to check on. That's not an atypical, typically it's not. Sometimes there's some, you know, fine language that it can, I could, I could tell you from my experience, trying to utilize these funds for ongoing operating costs would be a bit of a headache due to the federal requirements and administration of them. So, while I don't think it would be eligible, even if it might be, I would say, eh, it might not be the best use of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Vatter? There is some streetscape money left from this previous year, and I know the tree board had some discussion in the past about utilizing those funds and if they weren't enough, perhaps some additional funds for duplicating the lighting that's on the side of the street by Xavier University, where they have that very nice strip of, almost looks like gaslighting and landscaping and stuff along Montgomery Road, and to duplicate that along that block of Lex, between, on Montgomery Road between Lexington and Cleny, to kind of mirror the Xavier University as an entrance into our city and the south end. So that may be something that you might want to take back to the administration as well.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak about how we could potentially utilize the community development block grant funds? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Good evening, Pastor Sonny James, at 18:30 Hopkins Avenue here in Norwood. With something this huge for our community, one of the things that I want to bring to the attention of council and perhaps challenge us on is, the thing that disappoints me in a way is that this is our second meeting for the public, but given the history of council meetings with the lack of participation from the specific community, and then when we do come together, as it was just stated, you know, after all of this toiling over this concept, we still come to the table with things not detailed, without a large representation of our community. And it seems like we just continue the processes from issue to issue to issue. And so although streetscape, the recreation department needs help, I think even before that, we really need to do a better job of really embracing the community's voice on where these type of community block funds are spent. There are other agencies, like a community action agency, who's funded a lot by block grants. And I think when we look at these areas here, my question again is, we have these areas, but is every facet of our community represented here? And so my challenge to us is to make sure we do a better job of really making sure we touch bases with every facet, because all of us have great ideas, and I applaud the great ideas, I really do, but I'm still seeing that even down to the wire, there's nothing concrete even as of this date in place. And I think with something this huge, either we need to have subcommittees, subgroups, including the residents, coming together, which I've, you know, I've been saying that for how long, and to get with those that can bring the community together, can bring a large number of people together, more than eight of us, and then to really begin publicly dissecting the funds and the availability of how we should spend those funds. Because everything on our sheet is great, but there's more to Norwood than just what's spoken of here. And I do know from other municipalities, the block grants, as it's been stated, there is some leverage, there is some room there to operate, and none of that is here in writing. So as I leave, I just want to challenge us, we've really got to do a better job of bringing more meat to the table, and namely, bringing more folks to the table that have an input and have great ideas. We've heard some great ones tonight, and I'm not taking anything away from those, but I really just don't think it fairly represents every population in our community. And so I believe the deadline that I was given tonight was the latter part of November, and so I personally want to encourage residents to get involved in this process, and I know we only have to do two public hearings, but council, I mean, eight people, I really don't think that really fares well for our fine community. I think we owe ourselves something better than that, and I think together collectively we can make that happen. And all it takes is a phone call or whatever, and I know personally I can help you, you know, get a few more people than that to the table with some ideas. And I know there are subgroups meeting around the town and all of that, but what is it doing for our public hearing? There's no voices here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak about potential ways to allocate our community development block grant funds? Please come forward and give us your name and address.
Hi, yes, my name is Mattie Regan. I'm from 1702 Cleveland Avenue here in Norwood, and I think that we should take the opportunity to look at some of our parks, and it's an opportunity to update our restroom facilities that I think are a barrier for many families being able to enjoy those public spaces. And I would also really like for us to investigate as a community ways that we can leverage what used to be block top for basketball courts. We've decided to take down a lot of those basketball hoops. So what can we take that asphalt surface and make into something that's still useful for families and neighbors that share those community spaces? Even if it's just things like painting four-square on them or painting hopscotch, we can invest and reinvent those so that they're useful rooms and places for families, as opposed to a reminder of decisions that we have made to change the function of those park spaces. That's what I want to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak about potential ways to utilize community development block grant funding? Okay. Hearing none, I will declare this public hearing closed. And Ms. Vatter, I'm assuming you will take these comments back to the administration, and I know they always include street resurfacing in those requests as well, so thank you very much for coming here this evening. We have several requests to address council, but none on agenda items, so we'll move on to reports of standing committees. And the first is the Housing, Health, and Recreation. Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee report for the Housing, Health, and Recreation dated 10/23/17 to the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We are committee of Housing, Health, and Recreation to whom was referred the community block grant. Beg lead to submit the following report. Usage of community block grant for renovating and expanding the gym at the community center and expanding options for children in Norwood. Respectfully submitted, Marilyn Hanahan, Chairperson, Brandon Blair, and James Bonzal.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I move that we accept the report.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Just want to say we had a great meeting yesterday about the subject. Specifically, just want to thank, you know, Councilmember Clark for attending. He's not on the committee, but he's honestly attended most of the meetings of that committee this year. It's been very helpful, so just want to thank him for that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Motion on the floor is to receive and file the report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to second reading of ordinances. It's an ordinance amending Section 505.071 of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio entitled Cruelty to Companion Animals. Mr. Bonzal.
I would like to move that we refer this ordinance to the Housing, Health, and Recreation Committee.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. As we discussed at the last council meeting, there's just some changes that kind of need to be made. We discussed it as well at the meeting last night, so just officially referring this to that committee will allow us just to get these changes made and bring it back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to refer this to the Housing, Health, and Recreation Committee. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to second reading of ordinances. It's an ordinance amending Section 505.071 of the codified ordinances of the city of Norwood, Ohio entitled Cruelty to Companion Animals. Mr. Bonzal.
I would like to move that we refer this ordinance to the Housing, Health, and Recreation Committee.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. As we discussed at the last council meeting, there's just some changes that kind of need to be made. We discussed it as well at the meeting last night, so just officially referring this to that committee will allow us just to get these changes made and bring it back to council.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to refer this to the Housing, Health, and Recreation Committee. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to introductory readings of ordinances. The first is an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency. We'll note that there was an updated Exhibit A, and just for your informational purposes, I did speak to Anna Mary Thomas and April Davis from the state, and both of them assured me that this is within the parameters of the financial recovery plan, so we can act on this this evening. Mr. Mumper.
I move to suspend the rules. I have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Sancker, is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, yes, Mr. did send like a cover letter along with it, but a lot of these changes were due to the county settlements, their numbers that came back as like accurate numbers, where the numbers we had placed in the appropriations in the past were based on estimates, and these actually were the numbers that actually came back from the county, so we're able to get a more accurate number as far as where these should be, and then therefore the certificate that was submitted to the county would reflect these changes as well also. So those were the primary ones. Then also, it also reflects some of the actual revenue for some of the TIP agreements and such on some of the funds as well. So these were actual numbers that the county had sent back for our records and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. Is there any other discussion? Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and have all three readings. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2017 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to suspend the rules and have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency.
It's your pleasure. Mr. Bonzal.
I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan, is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is just like a 60-day extension of the one-year temporary moratorium that we already have on the books. So the rules for the medical marijuana facilities didn't come out as early as we expected when we had that one-year moratorium. So we just need more time to evaluate the potential impacts of this to determine how we kind of want to act as a city.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzal. Mr. Sancker.
Question through the chair to maybe the law director, or if anyone else can answer, because I didn't get on to look on the website today, but when officially is the state accepting applications for potential dispensaries in various locations around the state?
Mr. Moore, can you help us with that?
I don't actually know the answer.
I wouldn't be surprised if they were accepting application, thank you very much there. I wouldn't be surprised if they are accepting applications now. I've seen the applications on the website for it.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Madam President. I would say then, I mean, if there are people who are potentially looking to put in an application for a possible location within the city of Norwood, and maybe they might have other places that they would like to look at as well, I would not discourage them from submitting an application if there are potentially good sites within our community. I don't know that they have, if there's a specific dollar amount that they have to put forth for each application they're applying for, but if they are accepting applications now, and people do have, you know, an interest in putting one here along possibly with someone else, somewhere else, I wouldn't discourage them from at least considering, you know, our location, because, you know, just because there's a moratorium doesn't mean that potentially down the road, you know, we would entertain a, you know, dispensary here, so, but I just don't want to discourage anybody from not applying for a location within the city to the state at this point in time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sancker. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I don't know how many of the council knows, I know there is at least one individual who was looking and was kind of waiting for the moratorium to end. I think it may be less, from his perspective, it may be less the question of filing the application with the state than it is securing the building that he would need to go into. So, I mean, I don't know what effect this would have, but there is, just so council knows, there are at least one individual who was. I definitely want to pursue it in Norwood, when's that, when's the moratorium going to end? Is that, I think that'll work, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, and building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by 60 days the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical and declaring an emergency. Ordinance extending by sixty days, the one-year temporary moratorium on the acceptance and processing of applications for the zoning, occupancy, or building approval for medical marijuana dispensaries and other medical marijuana facilities and the issuance of such approvals and declaring an emergency.
It's your pleasure. Mr. Bonzo.
I move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. So this is just like a sixty-day extension of the one-year temporary moratorium that we already have on the books. So the rules for the medical marijuana facilities didn't come out as early as we expected when we had that one-year moratorium. So we just need more time to evaluate the potential impacts of this to determine how we kind of want to act as a city.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Mr. Sankar.
Question through the chair to maybe the law director, or if anyone else can answer, because I didn't get on to look on the website today. But when officially is the state accepting applications for potential dispensaries in various locations around the state?
Mr. Moore, can you help us with that?
I don't actually know the answer.
I wouldn't be surprised if they were accepting application. Thank you very much, sir. I wouldn't be surprised if they are accepting applications now. I've seen the applications on the website for it.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President. I would say then, I mean, if there are people who are potentially looking to put in an application for a possible location within the city of Norwood, and maybe they might have other places that they would like to look at as well, I would not discourage them from submitting an application if there are potentially good sites within our community. I don't know that they have to, if there's a specific dollar amount that they have to put forth for each application they're applying for. But if they are accepting applications now, and people do have, you know, an interest in putting one here along possibly with someone else, somewhere else, I wouldn't discourage them from at least considering, you know, our location. Because, you know, just because there's a moratorium doesn't mean that potentially down the road, you know, we would entertain a, you know, dispensary here. So, but I just don't want to discourage anybody from not applying for a location within the city to the state at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. Just, I don't know how many of the council knows. I know there is at least one individual who was looking and was kind of waiting for the moratorium to end. I think it may be less, from his perspective, it may be less the question of filing the application with the state than it is securing the building that he would need to go into. So, I mean, I don't know what effect this would have, but there is, just so council knows, there are at least one individual who was. I definitely want to pursue it in Norwood. When's that, when's that, when's the moratorium going to end? Is that, I think that'll work, so.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We'll move on to ordinance number three, an ordinance authorizing the safety service, service safety director to extend the current contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood through December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mupper.
I move we suspend the rolls. I have all three readings.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to extend the current contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood through December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to extend the current contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood through December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to extend the current contract with Rumke of Ohio, Inc., to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood through December 31st, 2017, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mupper.
I move we pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzo. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mupper.
We need to keep our garbage being collected. It's plain and simple. There's no scientific reason, but we just need to continue.
The current contract expires October 31st, so it just extends it for two more months. So we can keep having our garbage picked up. You're right. Thank you, Mr. Mupper. Mr. Bonzo.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And I agree with the previous councilperson. We've got to keep the trash going. And, you know, it's unfortunate that I feel like we've gotten this close to the deadline to kind of extend this, but it is what it is. We're going to take the action and make sure that the garbage is still getting there. So I look forward to further discussion of the next ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Final ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids for a contract to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as option years for 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzo.
I move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids for a contract to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as option years for 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids for a contract to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as option years for 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids for a contract to provide for garbage and other waste collection for the city of Norwood for calendar years 2018, 2019, and 2020, as well as option years for 2021 and 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
I move to pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam President. So again, yeah, this, with the contract expiring at the end of the year, we have to get these bids out. The only concern I have is that in the current, I don't know exactly what they're planning on using as the criteria for the bids, but I think that we should really emphasize in this, and I'll be reaching out to the safety service director in the mayor myself, but emphasize that there is an 8:00 AM start time in the city of Norwood for trash collection. Because I'm still getting reports of, not as frequently, but I'm still getting reports of Rumke trucks out at 6:30 in the morning trying to, or picking up trash and waking people up. So just really want to emphasize, just really want to make sure that that is clear, because I wouldn't want to lead a company in the wrong direction, them thinking they can start at 4:00 AM, 5:00 AM, when we have an ordinance for 8:00 AM. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I question that? Are you sure it's not seven?
I thought it was seven.
I thought it was seven.
It could be seven. That's fine. It's, but I've just been getting reports of 6:30, so thank you so much for that.
I'm pretty sure it's seven, but.
Good enough.
I'm sorry to it.
Maybe it's longening, I'm thinking of.
Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to pass the ordinance. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mupper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no introductory readings of resolutions nor administration reports, so we will move on with other requests to address council. The first is Virginia Wallace. If you can give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
My name's Virginia Wallace. I live at 1766 Williams Avenue. I've been there probably fifty-some years. Again, I'm here to speak on behalf of the C-9 and the Millennium that I heard there was going to be in an ordinance on tonight to abolish. We were basically told in a meeting on Wednesday night that it was either accept this, or it's done, and it will be on for Tuesday night. I feel like they used a threat tactic to people who were giving us the information, which I've now found out wasn't true. It wasn't coming on the agenda for tonight, but I felt this was the time to speak to everybody before it comes out, is my feeling on it. That's something that they can say under contract, whatever they want, that whatever they were going to offer at some point would be under contract. Well, we were under contract back when this was negotiated, and I don't think it's something that they should be taking away from the seniors. I was married to a firefighter paramedic for 25 years, and I, you know, that was a negotiation back, and people had to be hired before 1975. I know there's been people added. How they get the information as to who was added, I don't know, but I'm asking you, please, if it comes before you, take into consideration what you're taking away from the seniors and the people who worked, all the years that they worked to get that, and why they gave it up, and, you know, and they gave them the insurance. So that's all I have to say. And I'm glad the ordinance wasn't on tonight like people were threatened with. And basically, a lot of people in that crowd Wednesday night, which was not a council meeting, I might as well clarify that now, were told, you either accept this tonight, or come Tuesday night, there's an ordinance on that's doing away with your insurance. So a lot of people have told me they felt like it was a threat tactic to them, that they take it or they leave it, when they didn't even know how much they were going to offer them per year to do away with all this insurance. So once again, I hope that you guys will all take a look at it, study it, put it in a committee, whatever it takes, you know, to try to hold on to that for the retirees and the widows. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wallace. Next is Kate Laubenthal. If you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name is Kate Laubenthal. I live at 3592 Outlook Avenue. Thank you all for allowing me to speak today about the Hamilton County Elderly Services Program, or ESP. This program is funded by the taxpayers of Hamilton County and serves older adults and their families. I'd like to take the next few minutes to explain to you about the program and how it is funded, and answer any questions you might have. The Elderly Services Program makes it possible for more than 5,700 Hamilton County seniors to remain independent in their home. It provides services such as meals on wheels, home care assistance, and medical transportation. Last year, the program delivered more than 555,000 meals and provided more than 3,000, five, sorry, 3,029, 329,000 hours of home care assistance. The typical client is a woman in her late 70s who lives alone. Due to declining health and mobility, she is unable to perform activities of daily living, such as housework, driving, bathing, preparing food, or managing medication. She needs help, but not a nursing home. Without this program, she and the other Hamilton County seniors would find it necessary to move into a nursing home. They would lose their independence, their privacy, and their connection to home and community. And for those who go on Medicaid in the nursing home, their care costs would be much higher, about $4,000 per month. ESP is also important to family caregivers. It supplements and does not replace the care that is already provided by family caregivers. Yet for many reasons, such as work and other family responsibilities, these caregivers are unable to provide all of the care their loved one needs. To be eligible for the service, a person must be a resident of Hamilton County, age 16 and older, unable to perform certain activities of daily living. This is a unique program and something that Hamilton County can be proud of. It's a community partnership, which includes Hamilton County Commissioners, the Council on Aging, a Citizens Advisory Committee, and more than 40 different provider organizations that have competitive contracts to deliver ESP services. This fall, voters will be asked to approve an increase in the Hamilton County Senior Services Tax Levy. I'd like to share a few brief facts about the levy and the Hamilton County's older adult population to help explain the need for an increase. Today, more than one in five county residents age 60 and older, and nearly one in four households include at least one person who is age 65 or older. More than a third of the county residents age over 65 report having at least one disability. Will just under 20% live at or below the federal poverty level. Voters have been asked not to increase funding for the levy since 2008. Since that time, revenue generated by the levy has been on the decline, and as a result, the Council on Aging has had to focus enrollment on those seniors who are most at risk for nursing home placement. Council on Aging has worked to create efficiencies within the program to find savings and ensure that it operates within its means. Because of these efforts, there is currently no waiting list for enrollment, but the program is serving 27% fewer clients than it did 10 years ago. And among surrounding counties with similar levy programs, Hamilton County is spending less and serving fewer seniors. The levy will expire this year. For the program to continue and to be allowed to grow to serve more seniors, the county commissioners have approved a 1.6 mil levy for the November ballot. The levy will generate about $25.6 million annually and will cost the average homeowner about $40.25 per $100,000 of property value. It's only an increase of about $10.85 per year for less than a dollar a month. For 25 years, the levy and the elderly services program have served our seniors and families in need, helping people to stay independent in their home and their communities. People like Florence, who enrolled in the program 16 years ago when she was a young 88-year-old. Today, the feisty 104-year-old continues to enjoy her independence thanks to the services she receives through ESP. Her daughter Lana is certain that her mother would have withered away in a nursing home. 92% of the funding for the elderly services program comes from the Hamilton County Senior Services Tax Levy. There is no other source of funding in the community dedicated to seniors, and if voters do not approve the levy in November, the elderly services program and the levy will end, and more than 5,700 seniors like Florence will be forced to find their care elsewhere. You know, I've shared a lot of information with you tonight. I've got a flyer that I can pass out, but I would just encourage you all to vote come November. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for all that information.
Yeah, thank you.
And next is Pastor Sonny James. If you'll give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. Listen, folks, I don't always enjoy the appearance to be against anybody personally or individually. At the same time, I have no problem in challenging status quo. Let me applaud briefly all of the citizens of our community that have stepped up to serve the citizens of our community on this council. Some will be returning, some won't. I think moving forward, though, we've really got to get some, some fire under us. I mean, when everybody thinks the same, when everybody acts the same, you know, I see a problem in that. Because if you look at a lot of the other municipalities, a lot of the other communities, you have fireballs in every community, and a lot of times, things don't move if we just allow things to move on as they always have. Listen, I've come before council with many ideas, and because if things don't meet how certain folks want them to look, you're questioned. Heavens, half the time, we sit here in council, and the few people that do show up even question the integrity, or the knowledge, or the experience of even those that serve the city. My encouragement is that we open the door, open the channel, to allow our residents to have an intricate part of the inner workings of our great community. And what do I mean by that? You know, I gave a multi-point plan a couple of years ago, and other than individuals privately and separately taking bits and pieces of it and trying to move on with absolutely no experience doing it, and trying to mimic it or duplicate it, nothing moves unless it's moved by a certain person or a certain group of people. What I'm asking of the new, the ending term and the new term for others, I've said it before, and I'm going to say it again, I think it's time, even some of the issues mentioned tonight, you know, it doesn't take rocket scientists. What's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong. But sometimes in Norwood, it's not being right, it's being connected with the right group or the right individual. We've got some issues here that I believe if we get some fire under us and we get folk in here, that not everybody says yes, 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 yes. Heavens, how about a no, just to slow the process up, so we force ourselves to think about what we're doing? I'm asking and encouraging that we look at like OTR, Evanston, Avondale, Bond Hill, and many other great communities, look at having not a guarded or gated community, but a resident advisory committee that is an intricate part of every facet of our great town. Not somebody handpicked to run it, because then that'll look just like everything else looks in Norwood. I'm talking about getting people that maybe you don't like, but that love this community just as much as you do. Getting with individuals that you know from past experiences, when they call a group, you get more than six to eight people. I'm not knocking any of the great things we have in our fine community, but guys, let's move this thing forward by getting more residents actually involved. And I'm not talking about just residents that think alike, talk alike, act alike. I'm talking about getting residents involved like me, who just because you say it, I may not agree with you, and I'm not ashamed to say it. Let's look towards a resident committee, not handpicked by anybody specifically on council, and not handpicked out of the groups, the existing groups that we already have, because those existing groups are still a part of status quo. Let's look to work together, get some of the fireballs in our community, get some of our seniors that are truly hurt by what decisions we've made. Don't be afraid of people not agreeing with us. Don't be afraid when somebody wants to point out something we have done wrong or bad. So what if we're not perfect? We've worked through tough times together, and we can continue to do so. I'm going to be challenging each and every one of you. We need a resident advisory committee in the great city of Norwood, but not one that's governed by the typical status quo because we won't get anywhere. Let the fireballs in. You know why? They live here just like everybody else. Include everybody. And for those coming into council, please, have a heart. It's a mustard. It's time to get the butter from the duck, and the status quo is not acceptable or good enough. Listen to the seniors and just do the right thing and say, we promised it, we said it, it's only right. You can move everything else for anything that you want to happen. Let's move things because it's the right way to go. God bless you. I love Norwood. I love my residents. I love each and every one of you. I pray for you. But it's time to get the butter from the duck, and it's not going to happen with status quo. God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor James. I have not heard that expression before. Next is Dana Bolt. If you'll please come forward. Please come forward and give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Dana Bolt, 3947 Elsmere. I just want to make council aware of something that is sort of in limbo now that we're in a post-emoio reality. We're all disappointed, obviously. I know that the schools and the city are segregated financially. A few years ago, the schools wrote and accepted a grant from Children's Hospital Medical Center to install the community garden. And the primary goal or intention of it was to teach children about food, grow food, give them the ability to see food being grown. I mean, I grew up with, we had vegetables, and that's not always possible here in Norwood. So I think that that goal and the grant is written, were admirable, and well-intended. As someone who can see the garden from my property, I just, I'm perplexed by some things, and I just see very little involvement from the schools. I had assumed it was going to be an outdoor classroom, that there was going to be some type of pedagogical agenda. My hope was that it would be staffed by the schools, that there would be a teacher, or there would be an intern, or there would be someone from Civic Garden Center that would be leading the kids through this, that they would be starting seeds in the classroom and bringing them over. I'm no expert. Right now, you know, seasonally, I have a lot of friends who are art teachers. I don't see Halloween decorations made by the kids. Now, I don't want to be a compliner here, but once again, I'm talking about engagement with the schools. If my math is right, that grant from Children's Hospital is winding down or has wound down. So recently, I made an inquiry, and as it turns out, I was told that the property was purchased for the schools and that it was zoned as school property, but in fact, it is owned by the city. So that means that there is, we are in this huge limbo, this huge gray area now, where honestly, I don't know who insures it, I don't know what the agenda is. So I think that would be council's problem, and I guess what my vision for the future is, is that the schools either take it on, really embrace it, write a new grant, allow it to be a place where the public school can interact with the community, including people like me that don't have kids, or that the city take it on and that it be, that it fall under the Sunshine laws, that there be a legitimate committee, that maybe the tree board watches over it, and that people like myself could go out, and I recently saw a few grants through USDA and people that want to educate about food, not Children's Hospital, but there are plenty of funding out there for buying the plants, for activities. You know, I would like to see a publicly posted regular volunteer day, so that if you saw weeds and you wanted to pull some weeds, you would not feel like you were crossing the line, or that that wasn't under your purview as a citizen. So, I mean, this is just one of these things that is open for further discussion, obviously. I think a lot of people in Ward Two that are hosting it would like to be more involved. I mean, we have numerous master gardeners, real experts. They'd like to participate more. So if council could sort of figure out who's, I mean, Andrew, you were in the original meeting where some citizens spoke up, and, you know, we you were in the original meeting where some citizens spoke up, and, you know, we'd like to see it be successful, obviously. And so if you could just make your inquiries and make sure that we pull it through this winter, so that in the spring.
Ready to go.
We have a schedule, we have people. I'd also like to say that the city went to some expense putting in public water there, because it needed water for the vegetables and trees. However, I've been told I can't use the water to, for the trees in the easement that I've got the tree grant for. Instead, a homeowner who's very generous has some rain barrels, and I use that water, but of course, it takes me a year and a day to lug it all over creation. So I hope I've given you enough concrete items that you can consider.
Thank you very much.
I thank you. All right.
May I ask for a question?
Certainly, Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Dana. Who is planting there right now and growing? It's not the children? It's not the school?
It's not the kids. It's different families. I think there are about five families that actually plant, and things were very sort of, now, obviously, the flowers look great, but the vegetables look quite neglected toward the end of the season, so.
But doesn't the sign outside say Williams Avenue School Garden?
No.
That's Williams Avenue Community Garden.
It was supposed to say, I think the sign was somehow funded.
Okay.
But it didn't say school, to the dismay of some who are not here.
Mr. Moore, that's part of the property that I'm assuming we probably owe some back taxes on?
That's correct.
So it is still in the city's name?
Yes, it is.
It is not in the school's name. It is property of the city of Norwood.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll look into this. Thank you. Mr. Sankar.
Matter of clarification, Madam President, the taxes were included in our appropriation changes tonight.
I don't think so, because that was not within the financial recovery plan.
Not that one?
No.
There were some delinquent taxes on our properties.
When we had the previous ordinances, oh, you mean, was that included?
We had.
Those were not, Mr. Moore, they were not the original two ordinances that you had brought to council, were they?
Well, thank you. The, I mean, the only, I mean, the increase to real estate tax is only $2,700, and that, I'm assuming, is supposed to be enough to cover what we need on the installment agreements for the two Paycor properties, so we can get those exemptions in and get those done and get that, you know, at least a chunk, hopefully, a chunk of that refunded, but at least get out from under that, because those are the two that have by far the highest tax burden. So that's what I assume, the 27, it's only $2,700, and I think we actually may owe more than that on the Elsmere property.
Mr. Sankar.
Yeah, that's, but I believe that was part of the process that gets squared away.
The Paycor.
So part of it.
Yeah. All right. That concludes our other request to address council. Is there any unfinished business? Mr. Clark.
I just want to encourage anyone, as, you know, we have, we've had our public hearings, but if anybody has any other ideas that is listening out there, feel free to email the administration or contact one of us, and we can forward that on to the administration if you have any other ideas on how we could spend this money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other unfinished business?
I know they haven't called me back.
Any new business? Mr. Bonzo.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So as I think everybody here knows, Election Day is November 7th, two weeks from today, and I just want to thank all of the candidates that have decided to put themselves out there and run. It's a, can be very trying at times, and it's very time-consuming, so just appreciate all of them doing that, just trying to serve the citizens of Norwood. And I just want to remind citizens that we have our wonderful Board of Elections office right here, 4700 Smith Road, so right behind Fifth Third Bank, and you're able to vote there this week, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 to 5:00 PM. The week before elections, though, the voting will be extended until 7:00 PM for early voting, and then it will be open Saturday and Sunday before the election. So there is zero excuses. If you are registered to vote right now, there are zero excuses to not vote, because there is free parking. It's super easy to get in and out, and there's plenty of stuff on the ballot that, as we heard about the senior citizen thing, we heard about other things, plenty of stuff on the ballot to vote for that's really important. So just want to thank everybody out there, and we'll see you on November 7th.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Is there any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Madam President, just a reminder, I know we passed it at the last meeting, but October 31st, next Tuesday, is actually our official Halloween from 6:00 till 8:00 within the city of Norwood. So just be careful and cautious and be looking out for the little ones, 6:00 till 8:00 next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzo.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I just want to thank ASAP Norwood, that's the, the former Norwood Drug and Alcohol and Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, and they hosted a candidate forum on substance abuse prevention. It was, you know, many of us were there, and I just want to say it was professional from the initial announcement to the final goodbye, and just want to thank them for all the time they put into that.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Any other new business? We have no communications nor absent members. Mr. Mumper.
I move we adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting eye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.